Okay, good afternoon, or evening, I guess. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. Welcome everybody here today. Happy Spring. And at this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Odom if he would offer the invocation and lead us in the pledge, please.
May we please. God of love and grace, thank you for this day and all that you've done for us. We praise you for the love you've shown us and what you will do for us. Thank you, Lord. Lord, today we ask your blessings upon your people in today's troubled world. Lord, bless our families that make up this community called Sanford and Lee County. Lord, be with those in need. Lord, be with those who are suffering. Now, Lord, we ask you to be with us throughout these proceedings. Give us the wisdom to make the decisions that will benefit all those that we serve. Your will be done. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right, the agenda. Any additional items we added to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to add an item to the consent agenda.
Okay.
Add an amendment to the sales agreement on the voting list. It can be item L.
Okay, and if you'll look in your packet at your seat of the additional items of interest, that abstract is in there. Okay, anything else to be added? It's the amendment to equipment purchase. Any other items? Is there a motion?
Something.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, and then the approval of consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to motion that we approve the amendments.
Okay, any discussion of questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. All right, moving into public comments. Okay, Mr. Jim Womack.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jim Womack. I live at 1615 Boone Trail Road here in Sanford, North Carolina. I have three things I would like to mention tonight, all pertaining to the WB Wicker School project. And I apologize if I'm repetitious with previous presentations, but I would like to draw three things to your attention. One is total cost of ownership, two, school safety, and three, transparency and full disclosure. On the topic of total cost of ownership, I think according to the CIP, in fact, I know according to the CIP of 2016-17, the new elementary school was supposed to cost just under $18 million. That's from the county manager's CIP that was approved by this board. The CIP, and one year later, in 17 to '21, jumped to $25.8 million, which is a $7 million-plus increase in one year. And then, earlier this year, it came out that it's going to cost somewhere between $24, $28 million to build the school. And that's not including all the total cost of ownership, but I guess just the physical construction part. Tonight, I understand that on the board, there's a consideration to get an authorization for debt, taking on additional debt upwards of $35 million, which includes this project and others. And it seems to me that there's, you know, these numbers keep moving around a lot, and that there seems to be a lack of clear and concise definition of what the total cost of ownership is going to be on this school. I, for one, as a taxpayer, would love to know that. Now, next, there are other operational costs which are going to be associated with the school, which are above and beyond what you'd normally experience with these types of projects, you know, one of which is community policing, another one is DOT road improvements that are going to be required in that area, another is lead and asbestos abatement, which is a separate contract and distinct from the physical cost of construction according to the school board. None of this has been tallied and reported to taxpayers in an itemized sort of fashion. I think the taxpayers deserve to know what it's going to cost to build this school. Secondly, in the area of criminal activity, last time I was challenged to say that there wasn't a crime problem. In fact, one of you that's sitting at that board was interviewed by CBS News this last week and said there isn't a crime problem there. It's been vetted. Well, according to the Sanford Police Statistics, that's not true. These red dots on here, these red stick pins, represent violent crime. Not all crime, just the violent crime in that neighborhood. Here's the Wicker School for orientation right here. There are two major pockets of criminal activity in that area. And this doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure this out. It's just looking at the police stats and plotting the crime that's actually occurred there in the last year, or a little over a year, since January the 1st of 17. The black dots on here represent drug crimes, one of which was heroin trafficking. I will tell you that no other place in this county has anything where near this amount of violent crime so close to a public school. Now, there are some criminal elements in other places in this county, but not anywhere like this area. There's been a murder. There have been a number of drive-by shootings, just on James Street alone. I mean, someone needs to get together with the police department and the sheriff's office and come together with a threat assessment on this property. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mark Huggins.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me talk to you about the indoor iron furnace. They're in the process of rebuilding it out on the Deep River, on the south side of Deep River. At that time, when it was built in 1851, it was in Chatham County, okay, 1861, I'm sorry, 1861. It was in Chatham County, and all able-bodied white men were all fighting for the Confederacy. Okay, so therefore, more than likely, the indoor iron furnace was built by slaves. There was over 6,000 slaves in the Chatham County area, which included, which is now Lee County and Chatham County. The slaves at that time were not allowed to go to school. Therefore, they could not read and write. Therefore, they could not write about who built the indoor iron furnace. I have talked to many people in historical, in Raleigh and other places, and they say, well, it was built by the whites. It was not. Because if you think about it, again, all able-bodied white men were all fighting for the Confederacy. I just want to note that whenever the history is written and the plaques placed at the indoor iron furnace, that the truth be known and not fiction. Okay, thank you much.
Okay. Okay, moving on into old business. Item A, and you'll find that on page 51 of your agenda, consideration of a resolution in support of House Bill 551. And this is what was brought to us by Commissioner Dodson, so I'll direct with him.
Well, by the way, I apologize for missing the last meeting. I'm a police officer, small agency. Sometimes it's hard to get off when you have officers that are out there, things like that. But at any rate, in reference to this House Bill 551, I'd be a little biased to them, a law enforcement officer, but I think this is something that we should support collectively. I know our sheriff is, should support for it. I believe Representative Reeves and Representative Salz have expressed support for this bill, and I would like to see us supported. I'm extremely in the area for victims. I'm very much for their rights. And knowing when their violators get out of jail and so forth, if you went through all that, I'm forgiving any opinions that they can have over their violators. So I would just ask, we just support that resolution.
Okay. Any questions or discussions?
Any motion?
I move to approve the resolution.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone, for bringing this to our attention. All right, new business. Recognition for Outstanding Achievement of Ms. Heather Connor. And I'd let you come up to the podium. And I will, I will read the letter of recognition. Welcome. Glad to have you here. And you'll see just how impressive this young lady is. And then I'll present you with the letter. Dear Mrs. Connor, on behalf of the Lee County Board of County Commissioners, I would like to congratulate you on your recent record-setting performance at the Arnold Sports Classic on March 30, Columbus, Ohio. In addition to winning Best Female Lifter for the competition, you beat your own personal record and set a new world record by deadlifting, I can't believe this, 402.3 pounds. Your person, no, your personal successes, your personal successes in the sport of powerlifting are inspirational to our community and exemplify the triumph and realization of dreams through hard work, talent, and determination. Your achievements are truly inspirational. We want you to know that your community here in Sanford and Lee County is watching and cheering you on as you work towards new goals and achieve new records in the sport of powerlifting. Congratulations again on your most recent success at the Arnold Sports Classic, and we are all looking forward to hearing of your future successes. So we are so happy. This is, I'll give them one hand. Thank you very, very much. Congratulations.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I've known this young lady for about 16 years, okay? But anyway, she was a basketball player. She was a cheerleader. And she grew up, and I was in a gymnasium one time, and I watched her play, shooting three corners. She hit 10 in a row at this one particular time. And she was discriminated against, unfortunately, in basketball, and she became a cheerleader. So congratulations.
Well, I'm glad powerlifting, I guess.
With God, this is going to go up as a lotta, right?
Thank you very much. Thanks. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank for being here tonight. She is truly an example of a strong woman in Lee County and has the world record to prove it. So I'm very glad to make that presentation. All right, moving on. Our next item of business is item B, the proclamation for National Public Health Week. Mr. Kane?
I can't top that.
I know. We should have saved her till last. It's just gonna...
Good evening, Commissioners. I have in front of me this evening a proclamation from the Health Department. Ms. Jamie Brown helped write it, actually, to signify this week as National Public Health Week. We are putting some information in the newspaper this week and also in social media, just showcasing this and kind of culminates with Thursday evenings, hopefully, community forums. Just looking to get the information out.
Fantastic. Okay. Let's see. And I guess I'll read this to the board in case you haven't had a chance to look at it. Whereas a strong public health system is critical for sustaining and improving the overall health of the community, and whereas the week of April 2nd through 8th, 2018, is designated as National Public Health Week and centers on the goal of Healthiest Nation 2030, and whereas National Public Health Week is a cooperative effort in the American Public Health Association, state and local health departments, academic institutions, community groups, and professional and trade associations that have joined together to promote a common interest in public health, and whereas to ensure broad focus and conservation of public health issues, a daily theme has been assigned from Monday through Friday to cover behavioral health, communicable diseases, environmental health, injury and violence prevention, and ensuring the right to health. And whereas collaborative efforts with individuals, communities, providers, and policymakers will help the next generation be healthier than the one before. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners proclaim April 2nd through the 8th, 2018, as National Public Health Week in Lee County, North Carolina, and call upon residents to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders better understand the value of public health and adopt preventative lifestyle habits in support of the goal of Healthiest Nation 2030, adopted the second day of April 2018. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right.
Madam Chair, before we sit down, would you mind a few comments regarding the meeting on April 5th?
Absolutely.
Be glad. Yes, sir. Well, two things, actually. The grant we're applying for, I appreciate the board moving forward to signing the consent. We received seven letters of support so far, when we needed three. So we've been really fortunate with that. Thursday night, we want to meet at 6:00 at the McLean Center, hoping for a really good turnout. Project Lazarus has been going on in the county for about four years now. We've done some really good things, but we were collaborating with the city on this, doing some more work, getting information out, and hopefully there'll be a collaborative effort from many different stakeholders, be able to push more information out, more education out, and the opportunity to expand on our outreach in the community. Because as we all know, this is becoming a worse and worse issue for everyone. So I'm looking forward to it. I'm hoping for a big turnout. We've got both sides of the rims reserved, so we'll see. I'm excited about it.
Me too.
Mr. Kane, you going to stay around for the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I was going to ask you a question. I have a question I want to ask you later.
Okay. We'll be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Sure.
Okay. Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Item C, presentation regarding voters' registration. Mr. Parker Holland, I cannot top that. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. I want to give you all another update in regards to what's happening in voting in the Lee County Board of Elections Office. This is part of our public service announcement campaign that we launched for the 2018 May election, had the great help of Jamie Brown, our Community Relations Manager. She's been a great help on with this PSA, but anything really that we've done, and anytime anything comes out that she has written, it's a lot better than anything I can put together. So I'm greatly appreciative of Jamie. I also wanted to let you all know that our equipment was delivered today. I think the last time I was here, I was talking to you all about our equipment. It was delivered today. We began our LNA testing for the 2018 election, and we've just about completed it. So we're very excited. That's moving forward. Our new board was sworn in this morning. We have four new board members as part of North Carolina General Statute 163A. They're now Susan Feindell, Harry Strifler, Rita McClellan, and Rebecca Whitaker. So we have our new boards up. But I also wanted to speak to you all as part of the campaign about what is a primary election, voter registration, and when and where you can vote in 2018. So for you all, you're all aware of this, but for those who may not be aware, I wanted to give another opportunity for them to be, to be educated on this. So all voters will be, excuse me, we have our primary election on May 8, 2018. The general election will follow in November. And for those who don't know, a primary election is held to determine which candidate will represent a political party for a given office in the general election. This November, or this May, excuse me, all voters registered with the Board of Elections as a Democrat or an unaffiliated voter are eligible to vote. Registered Republicans who reside in County Commissioner District 4 are also eligible. Registered Republicans who reside in County Commissioner or District 4 are also eligible. In primary elections, voters affiliated with a political party may only vote for the ballot for the specific party and are closed from voting in another party's primary. Unaffiliated voters have the choice to vote in a recognized party's primary. Now, North Carolina has four recognized political parties. There are the Libertarian Party, the Green Party, the Democratic Party, and the Republican Party. When a person registers to vote, they may choose one of the recognized parties or they may choose to remain unaffiliated, meaning they choose not to affiliate with the political party. So, voter registration, in regards to that, to register and vote in a North Carolina county, a person must meet the following requirements. They must be a U.S. citizen. They must be a resident of the county, and prior to voting in an election, they must have resided at their residential address for at least thirty days prior to the election. They must be at least eighteen years of age, and they must not be serving a felony sentence. If by chance someone has been previously convicted of a felony, the person's citizenship rights must be restored before they can re-register to vote again. Then we also want to make sure that everybody knows where they can obtain voter registration forms. We, of course, have them in our office. They can be uploaded offline, printed out, and sent in to us. They have, we actually have some here at the Government Center. They're available at the library. Social Services and the DMV should also have them as well. So, and for this year, for the May primary, the voter registration deadline is April the 13th. So, we also want to talk about when and where you can vote this year. Early voting actually is just right around the corner. It begins April 19th. It will be held at our office and at the McSwayne Center. The hours are Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and we're going to be open on Saturday, May the 5th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. In addition to absentee voting in person or early voting, we have absentee voting by mail. To request an absentee ballot by mail, all somebody would need to do is fill out a form that can be found in our office, it can be found online. If somebody does not have access to a computer, they're not able to get out, if they would just give us a call, we will be happy to mail them one. Absentee ballots are, must be returned postmarked by Election Day, by Election Day returned, or postmarked, excuse me, by 5:30 p.m. And they have, individuals have till May the 1st to request an absentee ballot by mail. And then, and I'm smiling because this is becoming the least turnout day, is actually Election Day. We're seeing more and more people vote early, but you can always vote on Election Day, which again is May the 8th. Polls are open at 6:30 a.m., and they close at 7:30 p.m. And on Election Day, you must vote at your assigned precinct. And despite what a lot of people think, it is, it is not the Board of Elections or the McSwayne Center is an assigned precinct. It's either, it's, you know, the high schools or a lot of the school service polling places, as well as the American Legion. If anybody ever needs to know how to check that, they can call us. It's available online, and if you still have your voter registration card, it's actually on there as well. Thank you.
Can you give me the hours for the early voting again?
It's April, we start April the 19th, and we go through May the 4th from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at both locations. Then Saturday, May the 4th, from 8:00 to 1:00. I believe I may have said May the 5th, and I apologize for that.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Let me ask one question.
Sure.
Can you give a little more information regarding the felony?
So, if anybody's ever been convicted of a felony here, or in North Carolina, if they've ever been convicted of a felony, and they have served all their time, meaning they have served, if they were incarcerated, they've served that sentence, they have completed their probation, then once that is all complete, they're eligible to re-register. It's very simple in North Carolina. I know in certain states it varies, but in North Carolina, that's all you need to do. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Okay, Item D, Request for Approval Resolution, Approving and Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of a Master Trust Agreement, First Supplemental Trust Agreement, a Deed of Trust, and Related Documents in Connection with Various Capital Improvements for the County. And Mr. Crumpton's going to handle that tonight.
Ms. Winter fell ill today, cannot be with us, so we will be thinking of her. So, I will try to take care of this. I was not prepared to take care of this until just about an hour ago, so.
Never admit that.
I'm admitting it, because I thought for sure she'd be here to take care of it. All right, the first agreement that you're approving is a lease agreement between Lee County and the Lee County Board of Education. In these type of agreements, the county owns the property. The reason for that is we own the debt, so we have to own the property to give the property its collateral under the deed of trust, which is also part of this. So, it's a, the lease agreement is written by our bond counsel, Paul Villo, and so it has a lot of legal stuff in it, but the basic is, is that we give the schools the opportunity and right to operate the school without interference during the term of the lease. The second agreement is the Master Trust Agreement. This is between the County of Lee and the U.S. Bank National Association as trustee. So, they're the trustee of the bonds. Once again, this was written by Mr. Villo. This is this thick thing right here. It talks about the rules, federal laws, all the things that are required to issue limited obligation bonds. The First Supplemental Trust Agreement is also between the County of Lee and the U.S. National Bank Association, and this is more specific to the 2018 bonds that we are getting ready to issue. So, it describes those bonds, the series that are being issued, and who is the trustee involved. And as I said, we also have a deed of trust that we give to the Fidelity Bank and the U.S. Bank National Association as collateral for the borrowing. And there's also a construction and acquisition agreement whereby the Board of Education and the county are agreeing to build what we say we're going to build in these bonds. So, the resolution simply gives the Chair, the Assistant Manager Finance Officer, and the County Manager, and the Attorney, the power to execute these agreements. Be happy to answer any questions.
And as noted, all of that is available in the clerk's office. You have a couple of hours.
We also have electronic copies, if anybody would really like to read it all. But all the documents were prepared by Mr. Villo, who has been our bond counsel for a long time.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the Master Trust Agreement, or First Supplemental Trust Agreement, a Deed of Trust related to documents in connection with various capital improvements for the county.
All right. You did better with that than I did. I know, okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Item E, Consideration of a Lease Agreement with Broadway Baseball League for the Lease of the Gilbert Lett Family Park. Ms. Parrish?
Sure. There's actually a new lease in your additional materials. I've been talking with the Health Director in terms of just the possibility of having inspections done, depending on what food. I had to make a few changes on the words, very minor. But as you're aware, we just purchased the, what used to be the Broadway Optimist Field out in Broadway. And right now, what we're, the county's planning to do is lease the space to Broadway Baseball League, who is going to run it for their softball, baseball, and flag football. And it'll be a month-to-month lease. We can get thirty days notice to terminate the lease if the county or Broadway Baseball League chooses to do so. They'll also have to schedule all events through the Parks and Recreation Department. Just asking for approval for.
Who's the contact person?
It'll be this, was it Stutz?
Larry Stutz.
And, you know, before the issues with the ownership of the property, this was the group that was running programs down there. So, this allows those programs to continue to go forward without interruption, and they have, you know, pretty, pretty healthy leagues going. So, we didn't want to interrupt what they were doing.
There's a copy, they have liability insurance as well. There's a copy of that, you know, in the packets.
I move that we move forward with the lease agreement with Broadway Baseball. As presented.
I've got a couple of quick questions. When I was looking over, and I see where it hasn't changed that much, with, I did not get a chance to talk to the mayor over the weekend, but, I mean, the 10:30 Sunday through Thursday, and 11:00 Friday and Saturday, is that, has that kind of been?
I believe they, that's what they were.
That is something that they had arranged with the Broadway Police Department.
Okay, so we've gone through that, okay.
That is in line, I think, with the planning guidelines, too.
For the Optimist Park before.
Just in general, as far as the when events should end.
Okay, that was one thing. Another one was on the maintenance and repairs.
That's what I was fixing to ask you.
Well, you know, just with roofing or plumbing fixtures, more larger repairs.
Yeah, we have spoken with them.
Okay.
You know, the basic maintenance that they're proposing to do is basically maintain the field, so cut grass.
Okay.
You know, keep things swept and line the fields, which we will do on occasion as well. But some of the major, you know, work that needs to be out there first, that was one of the reasons it's kind of general, is there are some things that need to be fixed out there, and it's really not, you know, appropriate for us to charge them. So, we're going to go out there and fix those things. We have a couple roofs, we need the eggs, and we also need to stabilize a few things. So, we're already out there doing those things.
Okay.
What about once they start using the field? Who's going to maintain them after, when they start using them?
When they start playing ball, they said they would cut the grass, so. But we're going to monitor it, and we can go down there and help them as well. We have staff that goes down there to Broadway already.
And one final thing. And I know these gentlemen, and, you know, the programs that they were setting up were very similar to what the Optimists were doing. But, you know, later on down the line, and I'm kind of looking at Mr. Payne, too, you know, what we've talked about, like New Hanover does by contracting out, you know, letting private organizations actually do the programming. Is there a way that we can, like, set a ceiling on how much they charge or whatever? I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, not using county facilities and then charging an exorbitant amount where, you know, the average family couldn't afford to use or to be on the team.
Well, we can address fees, you know, with them going forward. We can set the fees. That's why we did, you know, month-to-month.
Okay.
And to get them through this spring and summer, which will be mainly the time that they're using the ball field. So, they already had a program in place. They charge ninety dollars. They also have scholarship offers. And we did put in the nondiscrimination clause in there, so, you know, they have to do their best to allow everybody to play.
Well, and again, I'm not addressing these gentlemen, because I've seen their forms, you know, and they were right in line with, you know, what the Optimist Club had done before, but just kind of moving forward, I didn't know if we would be able to do that, so. Okay. Just a question, just a question. Anything else? Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, Request for Approval of Resolution, Requesting an Opinion from the Attorney General's Office Regarding Clarification of N.C. General Statute 158-7.1 on Notice of Public Hearing Requirements for Economic Development Items. Mr. Crumpton?
Yes, ma'am. This law was passed back in 2015, and as we've moved forward with economic development expenditures, which is really what this applies to, is there's been some discussion amongst local government managers, economic development staff, and then obviously attorneys, who have asked a lot of questions about what the true meaning of GS 158-7.1 is. And I'll give you an example. You know, when we hold public hearings, we now are required to advertise each public hearing, giving the amount of money, number of jobs, so on and so forth. But if the project changes after we've held the public hearing, you know, does that require another public hearing? Since you've already had one, if it goes up or down, you know, what is the, what is the result of doing that? That just gives you an example. But, you know, pertains to any expenditure for economic development that, you know, we may do. Whether you have to have it, the city has gone as far as to pull out their economic development budget. You know, they approve on July 1st and vote on that separately, because they feel that that's something that the statute says. And I don't think that that's really what it says, but that's how they've interpreted it. So, we're just asking for an interpretation from the Attorney General on how to comply with the law when it comes to economic development expenditures under GS 158-7.1.
Okay. Any questions? I know. Yep. Their motion?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Hopefully, we'll get some clarification on that soon. All right, Item 6, Commissioners' Comments.
Yes, ma'am, I just have one item, since he took care of the item on Thursday night for us. So, well, I need to let the board know that a few meetings back, you approved a contract with a contractor to put in new boilers, heating boilers for the jail. And basically, that's the hot water we use in the jail for both food and for the inmates. And that contract has not gone well. We're still having issues with that. An issue last, we had, the contract said that we were almost supposed to be without hot water for three days. We've now been, we were without it for nine days. So, you may hear some issues come from the sheriff in the jail over that, or maybe some judges, or some attorneys, or whatever. But we do have hot water back on now, and we still do have some issues with the installation, and have hired a local contractor to finish this for the contractor that we hired. So, we're just putting you on notice that we have some issues, and we're working through them to make sure that we complete the project, and we are withholding money from that contractor.
Any questions, ma'am? All right, good. Well. I've talked to you, talked to the sheriff over the weekend, and tried to make the best of a bad situation, so we'll get there. And thanks to the local help, for sure. Okay. All right, Commissioners' Comments? Commissioner Reeves?
I only watched the voice twice.
You stole one of my topics.
I just wanted to shout out, but Mr. Buchanan, he's made Sanford proud, very, very proud. Yes, we probably do a lot of condemnation there as well.
We're going to work on that, yeah.
Thank you.
I hope I don't steal anybody's thunder, but Ms. McGee did take myself and Doc over to see the Wellness Center, and a job well done. I hope the employees utilize it and see the full benefit, because this, Russell and y'all did a nice job. I told Ms. McGee I picked the same color of paint. But it really is, it's nice. The facility's in great shape.
Some of the people that were involved in that project, and then he reminded me, he stole my thing.
You passed it on, sir.
That's, but here's some of the folks, if y'all want to take a look at them at some point down the street. And Russell or George may identify him if you will.
Who put the picture together, the collage?
Santiago.
Santiago, oh, fantastic job. That's so, that's very, very good.
We took it to the hobby, hobby, lobby. Up town there, and they actually, they're together, they're going to give a job. We, when we started renovation, though... Together, they done a good job of, we, when we started the renovation, a lot of you may not know that this was our youth service field. Prior to that is actually nurses. Where the nurses live, works here at the hospital, this was the hospital at that time. But when we started, it been building the people, a lot of course, the coach or downstairs. But our staff really excellent. We, the whole kitchen area, we tore it, completely tore it out. You can see here, this is a new renovating, what we done, we made it so lab seating is actually the kitchen seating for the kids. So we got a lab seating there too. We took in the heating system, we took the two new heating system in, all of it, everybody tore down. We did not replace all the tile seating. A lot of the tiles aren't too good, so we kept the existing tiles, we didn't replace tiles in areas, which is easier to maintain and clean. This is staff here is showing them that we done electrical work. And electrical work for hospital seating or adoption is different because you have to have extra ground. We didn't know that, but we learned this. But because it's new, it's new experience for us, so actually it's good, we learned some new things. But we got that wired up. We went through all our proper inspections, we see, make sure everything was in line. We had pre-approved foot plans that we went by to make sure we made the codes and stuff that was required to, to need to seal these needs. And I like to say Joyce and her staff was really great with it too because it was a new undertaking for us, but it will be a great thing because it did example. About a month ago, I had a urine infection. Of course, you knows, we all, we have to call the doctor. Then you can't get a point that day, you got to get a point the next day. But see, and then the next day, then I had to wait in, in, with the group, all the people were sick. So maybe this will be a lot better for our staff. I think it's a great thing, and Commissioner, I really appreciate y'all on that for us. I'm a longtime employee. And I got to say, there's a lot of things, from sport, the manager, the commissioners, that have forced out of my career, and I really truly appreciate it. It's been a long time for, I know how it was a long time. But I appreciate all the support. But, but anyway, we pretty much, we, we kept all the core like it was. We just updated everything and made it what is very useful for the, for the hospital, what I call hospital seating. So, and I hope it'll be something the staff will really use and enjoy.
Name the people.
Okay, people, okay. This is Paul, now Paul's one of our maintenance technicians. He's learning, this is Lance.
Yeah, that last name.
Do what name?
That last name is what.
Okay, Paul, what's it, trying to pronounce his last name.
Satterfield.
Satterfield, yeah. And then Lance.
Al.
Thank you, Joyce. I know, of course, not yet, but I heard you. This is Edward Johnson. And I don't, they just tell me, just.
Is that the accent of Santiago?
It may be him, but he wasn't.
Not that I'm looking.
The gentleman on the lower level, your pastor, Lonnie Wayne, he's actually my field supervisor. And I'm field supervisor, so keep in mind, I'll come by first name. Thank you.
Mr. Spivey's got such a great department. They're all on a first-name basis. It's a family over there, Eddie Russell.
Hey, I'm very grateful because I tell you, you know, we talked earlier about the, the voice system at the courthouse. And I appreciate Mr. Trump's support and the sheriff's understanding, especially the jail staff. The keeping this jail in control is a big score deal in its time. And I got to say that the staff are in jail, Wade and his crew, really doing a great job. And I appreciate that too, that we have really had a tough time with this contractor making this happen. But now my staff, I got to say, they were, we, three officers here, four officers here Friday, trying to make sure things happen. And we made it happen, but it's not been easy for we did, but I appreciate it. And Mr. Crumpton's very supportive, and I do appreciate that, sir.
Thank you. Thank, thank you so much for all your hard work.
I'm just going to say to you that that is as good a job as I've seen any contractor around here do.
Well.
It looks absolutely fantastic.
Well, I appreciate that. And of course, now, you know, commissioners and everybody else is putting in too because we have money, fund, and we've worked it out. And I fell short some areas, but I got some areas that I came out good in. So in the long run, you know, we made it work and it's something that I'm proud of. And I'm proud that my staff takes to, you know, pride is a very important thing. And that's what we don't see a lot of now, the, the contractors, a lot of people just don't take pride that they was taking, and a lot of people, my staff takes a lot of pride, and I'm very grateful for that. Really am, and I appreciate the support of all of the board and Mr. Crumpton, Lisa, and everybody that supports them throughout county, all the department heads. I work with all of them, and we got a good group of department heads. And when things go wrong, I try to keep them informed, like I try to keep people informed on a jail situation to make sure everybody understands what's going on. But a lot of times in the heat of a matter, you got a lot going on, it's hard to always, you know, to cover all your bases. But that's where Mr. Crumpton, a lot of times he helps me and fills in my gap, should I say, when I fall short. And I appreciate that.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Spivey. We appreciate it. Just to point out to everybody, they were all doing that on a holiday. So they, they, they're twenty-four seven. When we need them, they're there.
And then I wanted to thank Mr. Crumpton and Whitney. I've had a gentleman that I have contact with in the Deep River community ask about the possibility of a small park in an area there and what could the county do? And I got a very good response from Whitney and Mr. Crumpton, so thank y'all for that, so.
Mr. Kane, I was wanting to ask you, I've received several complaints in the last week or so about the house across the road from Tramway School. There's a lot of concerned citizens out there about some of the stuff that's going on. And I just want to know what the health department has done, or have y'all been informed, or?
We were informed. We shared it with the enforcement and DSS, I'm pretty sure.
We have forwarded the information. I'm not sure of a resolution, but we have forwarded the information.
If y'all will, please stay on top of that because there's, there's something going on there. I don't know what, it's looked like a bad situation. I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The other thing I got is, I saw in a paper where Wilson Road Center is going to be closed down. John, how long is it going to be closed down?
I believe it's a week. A week? I believe now, I have to confirm that. And what it is, we haven't, we haven't, the drainage, we haven't the sewer drainage taken care of. You know, where there's, one of the compacters, the drainage part, we were actually taking it, putting in a septic system to, to catch the, what I call trash use, I guess, as a way to. But I need to confirm that, Dave, and I believe it was a week, but I'll get back and confirm that. I'm not very secure on that because that's been taking place on the open ground, so I'm not very secure on that.
Okay. And the other thing I have is, we have staff talk to, make a response to the division about. Traffic problem at Tramway School.
Yes, and we're preparing that. And we're actually giving them a solution.
Okay.
We're working on a solution. So we will not only tell them it's an issue, but then we will provide them a solution.
That's what we need.
Hopefully we'll get this further.
And I'll just mention this, trash, we're not going to let it go. We're going to stay on it.
Yep, yep, I agree.
One positive in that area, I can comment on the 421 bypass from Cody to number one. They did pick up trash, and it was a lot of trash.
Yeah, but it looks a lot better.
They spent two days there, just in that mile, two or three miles.
Did your people tell you how much they picked up in that one area out down 42, you know, when they went out and cleaned it up?
No, sir.
It was a pile, I knew it was a pile of trash.
We, we had a crew in the industrial park last week for a, a day, and they picked up a pile there.
Yeah.
It's, it's amazing what's out there when you really start looking for it.
Broadway Road is another one to add to the list.
Back to Heather Conroy. That's, we're not talking about a local champion, state champion, or national champion. We're talking about a world champion. And we're talking about somebody that weighs about ninety-eight pounds. Four hundred pounds. I played softball and basketball with her dad, and he was a fire competitor, and I guess that's where you got that. Congratulations again. And Commissioner Reeves stole my other thing. But I do want to mention Britain Buchanan, his performance on the voice, and I hope he does well with that. And the resignation of Burton Cates, high school football coach for the last nine, ten years, had an outstanding record, coached, was a class act, had a great program. We wish him well. And just another reminder for the opioid forum Thursday, we'll explain some.
Six o'clock.
Yes.
Well, I hope everybody had a great Easter.
Same thing about you, have a great Easter. Appreciate taking time out this evening to be here. And I do appreciate that.
Just a couple of things. We've got a lot of school kids that are on break this week, so just be mindful of them as they're out. We've been really blessed with great weather this week while they're out. I know my youngest is out of school right now, super excited. So, you know, I'm sure bicycling and just kind of walking around and enjoying their freedom for a little while before they get back in the school grind. So just, you know, be on the lookout for them. And also, I know around my house, most of you know we farm for a living, and the farm equipment is rolling, especially with the weather like it is. So just my, my public service announcement that I do a couple of times a year, and I'll do it again tonight, is our, our tractors and our sprayers and all are pretty big pieces of equipment. And we try to move over as much as we can to let folks buy. We try to go as fast as we can, but, you know, sometimes we do have to get from one field to another. And one thing people don't realize is we can't move over but so far, or we'll clip a mailbox or a road sign or something like that. And I see Mr. Kelly over there nodding, he knows exactly what I'm talking about. So just be patient because we, we, we all do like to eat. So as, as the farmers are going around, just be mindful of them and try to just be patient and understanding and, and be safe. Please don't pass heavy equipment because they really can't get out of the way and give you room if you're passing and somebody's meeting you head on.
See all the.
It is, it is really hard. So just everybody stay safe and enjoy the warm weather. And since it's Health Week, let's try to eat healthier and get a little exercise since the weather's cooperating and check our families out and enjoy some quality time. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, we adjourn. Thank you very much.